This meeting will come to order. Public hearing, roll call please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Public hearing, none. All right, regular session, roll call please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
I ask you, please stand for our prayer and pledge. I ask Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer.
Most gracious love return to him and the Father, we just thank you right now, giving you the glory and honor that it do your name, thanking you Father, that this is the day that you made, and we rejoice and we're glad about it. We just thank you for your darling son, Jesus, who died upon the cross, that we too would have access to the tree of life. Now, Father God, we just thank you for what you've always done, that's continued to protect, guide, and keep us. Thank you, Father God, that everything tonight will be done decent and order and pleasing and in your sight, where you will get all the glory, honor, and praise, in Jesus' most holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
For the pledge, I ask all veterans and active military to please render the proper salute.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reports, anyone have a council report? Kiel? Yeah.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of the citizens that came out on last Saturday to help us out in District One and our district-wide cleanup. We had a total of 61 volunteers and we picked up 166 bags of trash in two hour, two and a half hour span. So, I really appreciate that. I thank you on behalf of the citizens of District One, for those of you that were not part of District One but in the city that came out to help, we do thank you for that.
Thank you for doing that, it was a good event. My four-year-old had fun picking up trash. Also, I'd like to announce that I'm having a town hall meeting for District Two on Thursday, April 18th at 5:30 here in council chambers to talk about capital projects and any issues facing District Two. Any other council?
I'd like to, I'd like to thank Buddy Ridgedale and Robbie Miller and those at the parish that worked with me to get the street overlay on Ellis Drive. When they overlaid it, they didn't, they didn't take into considerations the driveways and it had to be, it had to be re-grinded out. And that wound up being a bigger project than we all thought since the contractor was no longer in the area. But, working with the parish, they did get it done and I think that made everybody, everybody pretty happy on Ellis. So, I appreciate everybody working together.
Thank you.
I have one more question.
Also, on April the 22nd here in the city hall chambers, I will be meeting with the subdivisions of Pine Hill and Oak Creek in District One. We'll have our town hall meeting for that area on April the 22nd.
Our mayor's had an award for Ms. McCaskill, I believe, so we'll, are there any recognition, are any new businesses that want to be recognized? Do we have minutes? Need a motion for the minutes of March 26, 2019?
I make a motion that we approve our minutes for our last council meeting.
Second, that emotion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Resolutions, old business, number one, appeal by Spencer Rossi of the decision of the Hammond Historic District Commission denying his application for relocation of the properties at 207 West Morris Avenue and 211 West Morris Avenue.
I make a motion to overturn a decision of the Hammond District, Hammond Historic District Commission in denying the application or relocation of properties at 207 West Morris Avenue and 211 West Morris Avenue.
I second that emotion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
No.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
No.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
New business, resolution number one, accepting a $12,000 Louisiana Local Government Assistance Program grant for the preservation of the Miller Memorial Library, and two, authorizing the mayor or his designee to complete and sign grant documents. Charles Borchers.
Good afternoon, this is, the contract should be linked to on the agenda for an application that we submitted back, I think in September, October of last year. The state provides allocations to the various parishes. Our parish has a memorandum of understanding with all the various elected officials to provide a formula-based share of that allocation. So, ours this year was around $12,000. We applied for it to basically repair the south face of the Miller Memorial Library. It's a combination of wooden glass, it's deteriorated, so these funds will allow us to do that. There's no match requirement with this, it's straight up $12,000.
Anybody here to speak on behalf of that? Questions, comments? Pleasure of the council. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, that emotion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Number two, a resolution to authorize the Hammond Regional Arts Center to host and serve alcohol as part of the following culinary arts fundraising dinners from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Do I need to read these out, Tanya? According to the, okay. May 6, 2019, at ALAC Culinary Equipment and Supplies. June 3, 2019, at ALAC Culinary Equipment and Supplies. July 8, 2019, at ALAC Culinary Equipment and Supplies. August 5, 2019, at ALAC Culinary Equipment and Supplies located at 17420 Highway 190 Hammond. September 9, 2019, at the Hammond Regional Arts Center, 217 East Thomas Street. Maureen Joyce.
Hi, hello. So, I'm from the Hammond Regional Arts Center, I'm the executive director there, and we support and promote both literary, visual, performing arts, theatrical arts, musical arts, and education in the arts. We have this particular series, the Culinary Arts Dinner Series, that celebrates the culinary arts, and we have chefs that prepare beautiful four-course dinners, and they are paired, each course is paired with a wine or beer. And so, we motion that we have this opportunity to be able to serve the wine and beer at these dinners, at the ALAC location as well as the Hammond Regional Arts Center.
And the people who are serving understand the minimum drinking age?
Yes, yes, we have a group of dedicated volunteers. This is the 22nd annual, and for five consecutive years, Dana, one of our, Dana Goblowski, one of our board members, has directed a solid group of volunteers. In fact, they're the same volunteers that were with us last year, and they secretly all want to own their own restaurant. So, they are wonderful at not only being incredibly professional in serving, but they also know all the rules and obligations where they're at.
Is anyone in the public here to speak on that matter? Questions from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second, that emotion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, a resolution to improve Hammond Harley-Davidson to obtain a waiver of the open container law to serve free beer on the premises at its annual Bike Night on April 18th, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at 1530 Southwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana. Jaden DeChantelsohn.
Hi.
You're back.
I am back. I just want to start off by saying thank y'all for cooperating with me last month because I was all over the place. It is the same thing, same rules apply this month, 6 to 9:00 PM, RV card, bartenders, free beer, three beers a person, monitored by our wristband system. That's what I have.
I'm confused, was it a different date last time?
So, last month it was March 21st, so it's a monthly bike night.
Oh, it's month, okay, because it says.
It's every third Thursday.
Annual Bike Night, so.
It's third Thursday.
So, it's a monthly Bike Night.
Yes, it's monthly.
So, is this going to continue every month through the year?
Yes, and I just saw that the person before me did every date, and I already know all my dates, so I can come back and do it that way.
That would be nice, so you don't have to keep coming to it. All right. Anybody here from the public on this matter? Questions or comments from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
We'll see you next time.
Yep.
Have your dates.
A resolution authorizing, number four, a resolution authorizing La Caleta Mexican Cuisine located at 108 Northwest Railroad Avenue to sell alcohol on the sidewalk in front of the restaurant for the Cinco de Mayo Celebration on Saturday, May 4, 2019, and Sunday, May 5, 2019, from 2:00 PM to 10:30 PM. Marina Rodriguez?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. The same kind of spill we do every year for Cinco de Mayo, for La Caleta Hammond, one of the representatives for them. We're asking to close, for not to close both days, but to do both days, simply because of the abundance of people that we have on both days, and it kind of helps break up our crowd, so that way we don't have kind of the same problems that we've had in the past with so many people swarming us at one time. So, if we kind of get to break it up and advertise for two days, then it won't be so many people.
Well, you have, so this is for an open container.
Yes, ma'am.
For two days, which I've never done before.
No, ma'am.
Right, never asked for that before.
No, ma'am.
Is this, are you asking the street be closed?
No, ma'am, not, not on this, no, ma'am, correct?
No.
No.
Because she did a waiver for the administration to close two streets, but she was told she couldn't, so what day will y'all close the street?
The 5th.
The 5th they will close the street. That's that.
On the Sunday. Yes, ma'am, the day actually of the Cinco de Mayo.
She needs to check with Ms. Alma to make sure that's the day that they granted her to close the street.
Yeah, I'm 90% positive.
So, I reached out to both the mayor and Lacy regarding that, just because there was a question of if we're going to have an open container, but a street's not going to be closed.
Yes, and see, that would be the thing, it'd be tied hand in hand, so if it's not a possibility, we probably won't even sell, I thought it was going to be hand in hand, so I was going to have a street closure and the alcohol permits for both days, but if we're not going to close the street, I probably won't put a bar outside. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Probably, it could be.
Won't.
Okay.
I won't.
Okay.
I'll change my wording.
Because you don't want people walking around without a street being closed, so that's obviously a hazard.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Questions?
So, you're asking for the alcohol for two days?
Originally, yes, sir, but we can change it to just the one day. That's better wording.
Yeah, because if you're not going to close, if you're not going to ask.
Yes, sir, it would be more of a hazard to have that bar outside, yes, sir, absolutely.
Actual question, ma'am. I don't even know if you know the answer. Now, why they didn't close the street the second day?
They just didn't give us permission, they said something, Ms. Alma probably knows a little bit better than I do. They didn't give us permission to close both days because Cinco is just that kind of broader holiday, and closing it the day before also, I guess, doesn't tie in with that holiday, so they didn't give us permission for that day.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can't say I particularly have a problem with two days of celebrating Cinco de Mayo, but, yeah, the street closer, the street closure thing obviously would be an issue, so passing this, can we make a motion that it's contingent on the street being closed?
Well, she stated that it will not be closed, they will not have a bar outside, they just, so you all are going to have it one day?
Yeah, we'll only have that on the 5th of May.
So, should we revise this to just say one day?
The 5th of May.
Yes, ma'am, we can revise this to say just the 5th of May, absolutely.
When I make a motion to approve, just for the May 5th.
So, wait a minute, are we going to have a May 5th or May 4th?
May 5th.
I need to make a motion to make a resolution to that, right? We're amending, we're amending that, we're amending the agenda to one day.
Yes, sir.
Which would be Saturday.
No, Sunday.
I mean, Sunday.
Sunday, 5th.
Okay, yeah, we're taking that, removing that, yes.
Yes, sir.
We're making a motion to amend the request to have alcohol served and on Sunday, the 5th.
Yes, sir.
So, someone to second that motion to amend.
I second that motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
So, we have a motion to amend, now we need to approve the motion to have it served for Sunday, May 5, 2019, from 2 to 10:30.
So, before that motion gets made, I just want to make a, I just want to make a point, I see Mr. Bergeron's back there. This is from 2:00 PM to 10:30 PM on Sunday.
Yes, sir.
And Holy Ghost is not that far, and I believe they have a 5 o'clock mass, don't they?
Yeah.
I'm just saying it's going to be.
So, they're not closing?
It's going to be a little.
The only road that we're closing is, it's not going to be the main road, not, it's not going to be.
It's just a road of tracks.
Yeah, it'll just be right by the tracks, and it's just between those two, so we go right before that railroad tracks are as well.
All right. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
A motion approved.
Number five, a resolution authorizing La Caleta Mexican Cuisine to obtain a waiver of the open container law for the Cinco de Mayo Celebration on Saturday, Saturday, May 4, 2019, and Sunday, May 5, 2019, from 2:00 PM to 10:30 PM, within the boundaries of Charles Street to Railroad Avenue and part of Casa de Fresa Parking Mall. I make a motion to amend the agenda to have this only be for May 5.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve that resolution.
I second that motion.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number six, a resolution to approve the Fume Room located at 206 East Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana, 7041, to sell high-low alcohol on premises. The owner is red, white, and brew, Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon. This is to get approval for, to sell alcohol, well, it's actually not to sell it, it is for a event center. So, it's a room that's in the back of where the Fume, um.
Boutique.
Boutique.
Cigar shop.
Yeah, the cigar shop is. And so, they're wanting to have alcohol with the events that they are going to have back there. It won't be an open bar, it's more event center. So, when they do packages, they want to be able to offer alcohol to the event. So, he's gone through the motions to fill out all the applications, and he's done so, and everything's in order, and we're asking for approval for that. He, the owner, is here tonight, and if you have any questions, I'm going to bring him up now, and you can ask him. Did you have any for me?
For you, I do. Is this different than a liquor license for a bar that is open at any time, or within the bounds, or it's a different type of license?
Yes.
Yes, well, yes.
It's considered a Class A general, by the way, which is a bar, but I already own a bar three doors down, and my apartment is behind this one, so I'm not looking to do anything that's open to the public. In fact, there's two doors that separate this space from the cigar shop, and it's not even visible from the street, so we're not, we're not going to advertise as a bar, we're only going to be available to do catering packages, if you will. Alcohol, space, and we don't do food, which means that we've opened up our doors to a lot of local restaurants to offer some catering packages to fulfill their needs as well.
Now, as far as, that's on the, on the state level, they have the different classes as to each.
Yeah, they only offer one type for this, this situation.
Right, now, the city, we don't distinguish, we only distinguish whether you're serving it on the premise or if it's packaged. What distinguishes what and how you can do it would be the zoning for that area, and I have gotten the zoning approved, and it is based on the ordinance 155420, which addresses banquet halls in that ordinance. So, that has been approved, the zoning's approved based on this ordinance, and has been given to you, and you know all about it, so.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Delon?
I just need to name an address for.
I'm sorry, please give me.
Todd Delon, 206 East Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401. I picked the best spot to stand, too, right in the sun.
Are there any questions of the council? I know we have some in the audience. Do the audience first. You have something to say? Come on, come up and please state your name and address for the record.
Sal Michelosi, 3607 Highway 190 West, Hammond. What I'm trying to understand here, he's trying to get a permit or license to do this, or is it going to be just like a special occasion and he's not going to have a bar, is that correct? Is that what he's, is that what you're?
I'll let Mr. Delon answer.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, in other words, it's going to be just a package deal?
Correct, yeah, not packaged.
Okay, so if you're going to have a function going on.
Package, I thought you meant packaged alcohol. No, no. No packaged alcohol at all, strictly on premises.
Right, so you're going to have.
Strictly for events.
Special events.
Yes, correct.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
Doesn't matter what it is, it's just a special event. Place is pretty small, it only holds about 45 people, so it's not like we're going to take up a lot of space and get crazy, it's just a.
So, it's going to be contained to the building, ma'am, not on the street?
Correct, to that room, as a matter of fact.
So, it's like an event hall, is it like, like event center, private parties?
Correct, yeah. Private wine tasting, private parties, baby showers, whatever anybody wants to do in the space, I just want to have the option of offering them an alcohol package if they're celebrating something.
Sounds nice.
So, it's not, so it's not just open to the general public?
Correct.
Just walk in and.
Yeah, there are two doors that separated from our cigar space, and the cigar space is only, is open every day, but that space is not open to the public, yeah. So, it's only for events.
Any other questions?
It's going to have a separate name for it, or the same name?
We're going to call it Boutique de Fume, doing business as the Fume Room, so it kind of gives it a distinction of the separation of the two businesses, yeah. Boutique de Fume is the cigar shop, Fume Room is the room that's right behind it, so. And everyone on my staff has keys, so the cigar shop closes at 9, but the event center can go on for whatever time they book the space for. There's no resonance on either side of us because it's two businesses, so they won't be making a whole lot of noise either, so, just, it's quiet space. We've used it for our wine tastings for a while, we have a catering permit to do that, but we want to put it under one umbrella and call it an event center.
Any other questions or comments from the public?
It's a great space if you want to come see it, it's really cool.
You're going to throw us a party today?
Yeah, sure.
Pleasure, pleasure of the council.
Move to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Most grateful, thank you very much.
Good luck. Number seven, a resolution to approve the mayor to enter into a contract for railroad track repairs with Royer Mutual Industries in the amount of $27,400. Janet Thurman.
Good evening. We sent out a request for proposals for the track repairs, we did receive three proposals back, Royer Corporation was the cheapest, so we're asking for council approval to proceed with the contract.
Thank you for your explanation, email to us, since we haven't done this before. Any questions by the council?
What all tracks will this cover?
I sent out an email, I think you should have a copy on there, it comes from Punchatula East, and it heads to Hammond to Pride Drive, that goes back by the airport, and it ends there, and the city owns that, so we're responsible for all the repairs.
So, they went out and looked at these particular tracks?
We have a hired contractor that goes out and does monthly inspections, he sends in a report, and basically, each month, they have ties and stuff that needs to be fixed or repaired, but we do not do one or two ties at a time because it's costly to the city, so we wait till we have a vast amount, and then we go out and we repair 30, 40 at a time.
The reason why I'm asking, I know that this track right down here needs to be repaired.
That's the one.
That's just the one, okay.
How often they go around? Check monthly?
Yes. And I can give you an example, I did print out a copy of the inspection report that we get, if y'all would like to see that, just so you'll have some kind of idea of what they actually do. If you look on the side, it's his remarks, I will tell you what's in need of repairs.
That's in this, and that's in this $27,000?
Yes.
400 job right here?
Person right there, yes.
Pleasure of the council.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number eight, a resolution, one, supporting the submission of a $100,000 AARP Community Challenge Grant Application for a new playground in Kate Square Park, and two, supporting a cash match of $25,000. Charles Borchers.
This is one that, as Councilwoman Gonzalez notes, we've been working on for a little while. We've done some work in the existing playground at Kate Square Park, but the long-term goal has been to put a new playground structure in there and do additional improvements to the existing playground structure. We have an opportunity to apply for a grant through AARP. There really isn't an upper limit on this, but we feel like $100,000 with a $25,000 match, that, that kind of hits a nice feel-good space for them. You know, it's 25% of the amount that we're requesting, and it's roughly the budget that we're looking at. We've gotten some updated quotes in the last couple of weeks. So, this is just supporting the application. If we're successful, hopefully we will be, we'll come back to the council and ask for your approval of a grant contract, and we'll specify at that point where the match is going to come from. I can tell you right now, we do have the matching funds in the grant match fund, if, if they need to come from there, as opposed to like park improvements or something like that. Oh, the other thing to mention is that notification will actually happen after July 1st, so this will be coming out of the next fiscal year's budget, not the current one. Any questions?
Oh, yeah, I do. The $25,000, so you're looking for the city to give you the $25,000?
The $25,000 would come from the grant match fund to be applied toward the project total. The project total's about $125,000.
Okay, yeah, because I see it's Kate Square Park, am I right?
Correct.
Okay. And I know it's not your problem, but y'all been having a problem with Mooney Park.
Yes.
And so, I keep hearing about all the other parts, yet I never hear the word Mooney being mentioned when they're trying for money, so I just want to bring that to your attention.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion.
A second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number nine, a resolution to purchase seven 2020 Chevy Tahos for the police department from Jerry Lane Chevrolet for a total of $226,529.52. Janet Thurman.
These Tahos are on state contract. The funds are available in our Milich accounts, so we're just asking for permission to purchase.
We do this every year?
Yes.
Okay. Does the number change every year, or is it kind of, we try to do 7777, or?
We do not get 777. It's based on the needs of the department. We actually just bought four back in October, I think, we made the purchase, and they just came in. So, it's just basically, as our fleet depreciates, we try to update.
I was just curious. What does that set on? How many years does that set on? Don't we have in-house that works on these vehicles?
Yes, we do have a maintenance, our garage does. I can tell you, we just surplus our first Chevy Tahoe, which was 2011, so this is 2019. Crown Vics, we're still driving around. I don't know how many we have left in the fleet, do you know? Probably about a handful?
About four or five.
So, we usually average at least 10 to 11 years out of them.
Wow.
So, y'all got a Crown Vic?
Crown Victorious.
Y'all do? I didn't know they still make them Crown.
They got a few.[1404.24]